Have you seen Park County's largest beehive? Come by and check us out. We are located across from the Historic Ritz Theater. We offer honey, vintage, handmade and homemade items. The Vintage Beehive is open Wednesday through Sunday, 10 to 5. Like us on Facebook.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it.
We have comedians from the comedian minutes from the last. She sent them out.
I saw them now.
I read.
Did you? Is that minutes for us to move over there?
Yeah, I can wait though until my time if you want to.
Okay.
Get through our regrets maybe.
You get your agenda?
Yes. Greg Larson.
Okay, that's quick. No messing around here at this meeting. My name is Greg Larson. I am the new owner of what was formerly known as Lee Allen Bryant. We're going to be calling it the Historic Indiana State Sanatorium. We're in the process of working with the county and to acquire all the buildings that were originally part of the Indiana State Sanatorium and do a full historical renovation and restoration of the property. We're going to be going in and restoring the 1911 administration building. We're going to be restoring all the other properties out there. We're under contract for the Cottrell properties, the dairy barn that's just south of the road. It was originally part of the Indiana State Sanatorium out there. And we are designing, the site is going to be a public event site, open for tourism, for conventions, for weddings, that type of thing in the county here. Let's say we're having a major effort out there and we're early in the process of doing our designs and plans. The principal owners of the property are myself and my sister-in-law. We're both civil engineers and so we've been working with IEDOM to get the site cleaned up, renovate the site. But we're also been working with the state fire marshal to make sure that the buildings are all state fire marshal compliant and designing sprinkler systems for it. Then we're working with fire pumps and retention ponds and everything. And I was meeting with Cameron here last week and he suggested, hey, you're not very far from the water plant. I was like, you're right, I am. I'm not very far from the water plant. And I am here today basically to broach the subject of perhaps getting water service run out towards that property. It's about three quarters of a mile along 36 out to that property. We expect to have several times a year to have several thousand people on the property. We expect the barns to be used every week for weddings or other group activities. And a big part of that is going to be water service out there. And obviously we could put in wells that would support 2,000 people. We have a water tower out there, but like I said, it's city water is always better than the water that you pump yourself. As additional possible incentives that we could discuss would be, we do have that 50,000 gallon water tower out there. I know the city doesn't have as much water storage capacity as they would like. Perhaps we could renovate, restore that water tower to provide extra storage for the Rockville municipal system. So that was the, I don't, I wasn't going to sit down and write the big engineering study of the project if you all were like, no, no thanks.
What size of line do you think we need?
A minimum of four inch, but probably a six inch line for fire suppression.
And you'd probably need hydrants, you put hydrants out?
We already have like 23 hydrants on the site.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't want to hook those to the existing water lines. And so we would mostly probably put one hydrant at the barn and then hook it up to the fire suppression system. And then we'd put one hydrant up in the campus on the north side of the road. And the, and that would be, we wouldn't want to try to re-hydrant the whole site, but that would just be a place for the fire department to be able to fill their tanker on the site as opposed to having to run down to the municipal wellhead and then back and forth. I know Valmore will throw in and bring their tanker trucks to fight a fire out there. But like I say, we really are trying to, we're going to sprinkle all the buildings because like I said, if we go through and do a historical renovation, restoration of all the buildings, we don't want to lose them to a fire. So, and it's just, like I said, the fire pumps for those kinds of structures are a significant expense.
Jeff, what's your initial first thoughts?
You know, it's not that far and I think we'd have to give a lot of talk to the cost benefit of, you know, and work out some proposals about, you know, cost sharing and that kind of thing. Who's going to pay for what? I know, was Barrett's Law may come into place.
I'm sorry?
Is Barrett's Law may come into place if you add somebody else onto it?
We talked about that. We have a really interactive.
Well, you know, you have some costs in infrastructure, but it pays back with decades. So Troy, what's your initial thoughts? You been around a block, you come?
I don't know your name. I mean, I think it's always good if you expand. The thing that I would have to look at with the fire suppression system would be if six inches enough without you having to add another tank to get that, because you could have so much continuous flow for so long.
Right, exactly.
And being a dead end like that, you may look at.
Is it a dry system or do you?
It'll be a dry system. Well, the dry, we would definitely be doing a dry system in barns because they are, it's not going to comply to control. But in the administration building and the superintendent's mansion up on the main property, they'll be wet systems.
What's an interesting idea, what's your time frame?
It's not, it's not, we're not pretty, but we have water there now. We have a residential well that's capable of doing 10 gallons per minute kind of thing. And the water's not terrible. And so for this year, we're, we're going to spend the next 12 to 18 months doing.
So what about 24 months out?
Yeah.
So I have to ask a side, side thing here. Do you own the ground that has semi-trailer on?
We're being ripped out.
Okay, just curious.
Yes, we are, we are, we have been working, we have been working with Aaron's Hogan Walkers to get some new tractors delivered here. I have another farm over in Illinois and I've been trying desperately not to bring my tractors over here to mow and move it because like I said, I ordered new tractors.
Is that stainless tank on there?
It is a stainless tank.
Has some value to it.
It does have some value to it. One or two, the two options for using the tank is we have an intermittent creek that runs down along the, I think it's called Allen Lee Bryant Drive. That's what it's called on Google Maps. There's an intermittent creek there and we may, if the tank doesn't have any toxic chemicals into it, we might bury it as a cistern and then use it for irrigation. Some of our plans for the, the site when it was built was kind of a small town out there. It was, it has its own power plant, which we're not restoring as a power plant. We'll clean it up and the state is doing, the state, if people aren't familiar with it, the state has done a heroic job of remediation at the site. They have spent a ton of money removing the asbestos during, I think there's 22 groundwater monitoring wells out there looking for toxic chemicals in the groundwater. Cindy Todd at the Economic Development Board, oh, there you are, has done a wonderful job of getting the site available. We've got a lot, if you come on and see it, we've done a lot of cleaning. But the state has also agreed to remediate, there was some property that was not being licensed to the county, that the county didn't withhold, it was the other 110 acres out there. And there was still some asbestos on that site. There was like six fuel oil tanks that were still buried on that site. And the state has agreed to come and remove those. The biggest outstanding issue that I'm in discussion with the state engineers over is the coal ash pile. There is 100 years of coal ash stored on the site. It's not, coal ash in and of itself is not particularly toxic. If you grew up back in the seventies, you would remember cinder tracts at, at high school. That was basically fly ash that they would, cinders is what they would put down on, and so. But with that said, a mound of coal ash, the rain washes through it, when you burn it, it concentrates the mercury and the rain washes through it. It's not a problem for like local people here in Park County, but it flows into the water and increases the terahots parts per million from 12.1 to 12.0 or something. It's some fractional amount, but all of those concentrated point surfaces of mercury are a concern to the state. And so the state is thinking about removing it. But that would be a truly massive undertaking to remove all of that.
So Valmore, we're 2021, 2022, yeah, we're somewhere in 2024, you might be ready to really consider water?
I would probably say next year because we can't open the barn until, a barn until we get it sprinkled. And so I'd probably say next year would be when we'd be looking for it.
Okay, it's time long. Well, you've met Jeff.
Yes, I have met Jeff. As I am not, like I said, me and the two owners of the site are both civil engineers. My sister-in-law, I'm a transportation highway civil engineer. She's a water systems engineer, water service systems engineer. And so, and she's getting, she's getting her Indiana PE. And so we can actually do, if you need someone to do the consulting engineering work on the system, we would be able to help with that if that would make it easier. I don't know if you guys do your own trenches or do you contract that out?
Well, pretty much contract is had historically very.
Yeah, I think for probably a three quarter mile stretch or something, we would probably contract that in.
But I don't see us needing an eight inch line, but I mean, that would, I'd have to sit down and, if, I wasn't going to go through and do the calculations of what I need for the fire suppression system until it was actually viewed as considered as worth even looking into.
Well, I think it is. I'm always an optimist. I've always wanted rim water all the way out to the lake area out east, that whole other city out there. But that's further down the road, but perhaps that would be, yeah, that's the first step in that direction. So maybe we do want an eight inch line. I don't know. We've got to dig a hole, we'll put a big pipe in. Of course, that affects a lot of things, probably a lot of stuff. Yeah. Will that plant handle that load? Well, maybe we need another well, I don't know. No question, yeah. Well, I'm sure somebody.
We've got a whole five river wells operating pretty well.
Yeah.
I mean, engineering wise, I don't know.
I don't think it would be okay.
I think we would not be having large events out there. A large event that would seriously dent the water supply of, it would be a lot less than like you would see from Bridge Festival. I mean, it would just be three or four weekends a year that would be a large event out there. Otherwise it'd be sheepdog trials or some kind of farm-to-market thing. I mean, smaller events, weddings, I don't think a 200 person wedding is going to really dent the water supply of Rockville. But, but a large gathering could potentially do it. We would maintain our own water supply for irrigation, for irrigating the fields and the meadows and stuff that we're going to irrigate out there. So we'll have an irrigation pump that would probably run through the existing water system of the property. And so we wouldn't use it for any irrigation purposes, just for drinking water purposes and fire suppression.
Okay, well, thanks.
Okay.
All the updates. Excited?
Yeah, we're really excited. And like I said, I just would like to thank the city of Rockville, the city of Rockville in Park County and the state of Indiana has been amazing through the whole project. Everyone I've talked to at all levels of government, we're working with the attorney general to get, there's tens of thousands of patient records still out there in filing cabinets, but the state EPA, the Department of Full and Security with the fire suppression, your Rockville Fire Department and Josh Shore and everybody in town has been as welcoming as welcome it can be. I can't say how impressed I am with the general helpfulness of everybody at the courthouse, the title companies. Everybody's just been wonderful so far, so.
Welcome to a small town. You'll see Cindy at every meeting. I've spoken to you on the sanitary.
Yes, yes, yes. I come from a town of 900, so this is kind of like the big city for me, so. I am a, I do know like almost everybody, my, I'll say, the difference between the town I come from and this town though is you guys actually have like mayors and have people, you have health, we just, everybody just kind of pitches in or out our place and makes it work and it's not nearly disorganized. So I'm kind of surprised, I mean, and the reason I think for that is, is I'm only about 30 minutes from Champaign and we're in Champaign County. And it, it just, it's Champaign County takes care of everything and the small towns around it just don't have to do it. But you being the county seat, you have all of the infrastructure. And so like I said, there's just not many people here, so.
What I may do, if you don't mind, is I may get you, I'll get you contact information from Troy. Troy actually operates on water system.
Okay.
And we also have a town engineer on retainer whose name is Roger Azar. And I'll get you Roger before you come back to information and get that to you. So maybe you guys can open up some dialogue.
What I say, and obviously we'll do, happy to use some cost sharing on the project. It'd be one of those things ideally where it'd be like amortized over 10 years instead of like writing a hundred thousand dollar check tomorrow. But we're more than willing, because we're looking at some steep costs for putting in our own competing water systems. And so, and so we recognize that there's cost involved with sending water out that way. And obviously I wouldn't, I mean, I don't know, I'd be happy to talk to my neighbors and see if anybody else wants to be to the municipal water system out there.
Well, I don't know how many people live back behind the constant barn there. There are several people down that road. It's not that far to Valmore guys. It's something to think about. It's the closest major, I don't know, I guess, I don't know, fire marshal. Anyway, a lot of people about that.
So, all right, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I normally do what I do back. Do you have a card? I'll send you my information.
Can I have one square?
Yes.
They have how many boxes? It says like 500, 5,000. That sounds like another room, but like another 5,000 boxes.
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to stormwater.
Stormwater?
If everybody is either, has proven immunity or has had vaccination, I can take this thing down. Is there anybody in this hall?
I'll go back to the stadium. Troy's a danger zone probably.
Yeah. Are you? I'm good. Yeah, I guess kind of, I hope, I mean, this is just kind of dialogue sort of where we are. In September, you know, town council had said it was okay for stormwater, was agreeable to let the stormwater go ahead and get a project designed to help with the back Jackson, Moore Hees, Beadle Street basin. Tulalap Lane is part of it. So essentially it involved two parts. One was trying to design a project to take care of the stormwater issues which are there, which we can revisit if anybody needs to revisit it, but I think most people are pretty familiar with it. So the current stormwater board approach is we've, we've got steps or stages, but because of the cost of these projects and the timing, if we, the first stage was done with the Howard Avenue project, the second stage, probably we're looking at 2026 before stormwater board alone had the funds to do this. We're not really looking at making a dent in the Moore Hees drainage till 2034 and Jackson, Jackson would be 2040. So it's a long time before we get relief to that area of town. So the thought was if we combine and stormwater basically would use the funds they had to get the project designed, then town council could utilize the 75 to 25 match from Community Crossings to actually get the construction of the project done. So that's where we left it. So we go through the process, first of the year we meet after we looked at the budget and gotten everything cleared and met and talked about how we're going to proceed forward with that and who we wanted to use and why we wanted to use them. Stormwater wanted to stick with Structure Point because of their prior knowledge from the drainage basin analysis and the Howard project and all that kind of thing. But we talked, I wanted to talk with, basically with the president of the council about issues and all that you folks had and why, you know, the engineering firms that you're using now and how this is going to interface and all that and find out some of the things. So after that discussion, the key issue really, one big issue that came up was ownership, proven ownership of the apparent right of way in those areas. That that's a potential, it's been a problem with some of the other projects and it can cause a lot of fluctuation in estimates of what it would cost to design or bring this thing up to speed or, you know, even who's going to fund it. Because to my knowledge, Community Crossings money won't fund that. And we're not, at least as of the time we started this, we weren't prepared to buy significant amounts of right of way.
Because this isn't federal money though, it's a little bit different scenario than opposed to Howard or.
Yeah, this isn't, well, this isn't federal money, so it's a little different scenario. But still the question is to be, if we're going to use all the right of way, you may have, while most people, we anticipate most people in that corridor would welcome almost anything to get this done. You may have some that say, you know, you don't own, this is my property. And so this is where the drainage pipes need to go or where we need to work to get the road in. So the right of way, we have to have my understanding and Nick probably, Council Sergeant could probably answer better, but we, the right of way issue is a big deal. You know, we were, so we're trying to get some information. We talked to Structure Point about doing a public meeting to assess the public support to see if we could bypass the whole right of way issue to begin with. But, you know, that, I think they want to be much better prepared and basically do a lot more preparative work before even holding a public meeting. And I don't think, you know, the storm board wants to spend a bunch of money upfront to assess public. Not, we're willing to spend some, but you know, we don't want to get into a lot of design project money. We don't want to spend money on design that we could later spend on, if we're going to have to spend on actual construction. It's trying to balance those resources. So kind of where we're at, the big hangup right now is to be, how do we issue, how do we resolve? What are we going to do as a, about right of way? We need to know, do we own it or do we not? And what remedies we have to obtain to be sure we can utilize the full apparent right of way in that, in those neighborhoods to get the drainage structures and the road and all redone. If we can't do that, then we have to just kind of drop back to our previous time schedule and keep salting away money for a few years and go one stage at a time. So that's kind of where we're at. I mean, we don't have an instant answer, we would do it. That's where we're at. So Nick, I don't know what you think on the right of way, whether we've got clear title to the apparent right of way or if we're going to have to go property by property and re.
Well, I mean, barring us having vacated our ownership of the right of way, you know, I mean, but we still have to do our due diligence to make sure we're legally entitled to do what we want to do. Generally, the engineering firms usually do that type of stuff though. They go through and they make sure that we're able to use the right of way the way we need to. I don't know how many properties fall in the area we're looking at or not, but.
There's a good number along those different streets.
Yeah, to me it looks like somewhere between 50 to 75 unique properties.
That leaves a lot of room for error. I mean, we've eaten a lot of costs on.
Going from the desk.
Yeah, walking the property. And I mean, Roger's been really good about that. He comes and walks the property.
The engineering firms are going to be more qualified to do that than anybody probably as far as and layout and construction and who owns what and, I mean, in all honesty. I can tell you if I have to pull 70 D's, I don't feel like that's covered under my contract and review them.
The initial concept or the design, it calls for curves and sidewalks, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, part of it with the Community Crossings funds, they'll cover all that as a complete street. So it's a chance to renovate those things that used to be on Moore Hees, some of it's on Beadle. You know, it's mixed around, but you can get the funds to do that. And you do need curves, gutters, sidewalks and various places to direct flow and to keep people out of it. So you can do it with that.
What is Structure Point, I mean, it's just an engineering firm. I don't even know which one we're using for sure. Historically Structure Point gives an estimate based on Google Maps, I think. And then they come in, that's where their 10%, whatever 20% is involved in the contract. Roger, what's his firm's name?
Deckard Engineering.
Deckard. I'm under the pressure, they come out and actually look and, I mean, Jeff, have you talked to Roger?
If it's an oversight on his part, he eats it. He doesn't change the order. If it's something that he overlooked or underestimated, he eats that cost.
Usually he tells you in advance what the cost is too.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this would be outside of our, whatever is we have Roger, the, we have a.
Retainer.
Retainers.
I'd suggest you just have both engineering firms tell you what they charge for you to do it and take the lowest bid.
Will Structure Point do it without change or do they keep that in their contract though?
I'm sure.
They always kind of.
Historically, they add all changes.
So they can give us a little bit, that doesn't mean it's going to be.
Usually they exclude right of way acquisition costs. If those are, you know, if there's some cost for right of way acquisition, they don't, they don't bid that in there and so.
I was more so thinking the cost to determine if there's a need for acquisition versus the actual acquisition.
And wasn't there going to be a cost for the public meetings? Could you see, get an estimate from Roger on that too?
I could talk to him about whatever you guys want me to talk to him about. And I think, I think he would be amenable to writing up some kind of proposal or outline of whatever you guys would like, just for comparison's sake.
I think some of the things that we kind of need reaffirmation on after looking at all this is if, you know, if we go back, it's okay, is the town council, if we've got to say, you know, we're taking this much, you know, right of way and everything's designed currently within the apparent right of way, which is outside of the sidewalk to the outside of the sidewalk where the sidewalks were, some places they've been destroyed and other places on Moore Hees they never were.
Jackson.
Jackson, they never put a man, but you've got, as Kevin said, you've got drainage input structures and meter things and all. But, I mean, is the town council willing to say, yes, we, we're going to enforce the ownership or the utilization of that right of way because.
Well, you know, I mean, you have to, why wouldn't you?
Well, I mean, every time you change things, people, some people.
So there's not any path where you can acquire ownership of a municipality's property rights? You can't adversely possess it? You can't own it by prescription or anything like that? There's the case law that's very clear in Indiana, that if a municipality owns it, they own it unless they need it to somebody else.
So.
So we just need to know, have we needed it to anybody else at any point in time? But we litigated this in Newport and we're on the other side of it. And there's very good law on it that says that you can't acquire a municipality's ownership interest.
That helps tremendously. The other thing that would, I think, help us moving forward is there's been a lot of change. It used to, the only game in town was Community Crossings and that's why we did it this way. But there's a lot of money floating out there for infrastructure and stuff. Is there a better vehicle to do this that the town has than using Community Crossings?
Everybody looks at same time.
Everybody looks at the same thing.
Well, I mean, there's always overstorm water.
Yeah.
Didn't we use that not too long ago? Didn't that...
Well, that's twenty-eleven.
That was wastewater.
Oh, wastewater?
Twenty-teen-eleven was last stormwater, when we came on in twenty-fold, we finished that out. How many overgrants do we have out right now?
None.
Oh, nice.
We cut that one closed, so, and monitoring.
Okay.
Are we getting the water this year, or did we decide not to because the money...
You could still have two if you decide to do that.
So that's a possibility, then, apparently, the overstorm water. What's the amount on that?
I'm sorry?
Amounts matched and stuff?
Um, hold on just a second, I...
Are there eligibility requirements and stuff that we have to meet, or, you know, a lot of times, are we up to date where it's a done, a done deal that we would qualify?
I'm not sure.
Some of them had, well, one of the previous stormwater grants, we had to have, you know, percent poverty and...
You meet that.
So, well, that won't be a problem?
No.
Okay.
No, you, all eligibility, you should be fine, because that's what we use for the wastewater. I can't see much changing from there. This does not have the amount on it, but it'd be between five fifty and seven hundred for stormwater, I just don't remember exactly, because it is a little less, I think.
Five fifteen, seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah.
So it wouldn't necessarily cover the entire project. But we can, at least we know it's out there, we can maybe look into it.
Yeah, so the, the next round of applications, proposals would be due September twenty-third for the second round.
So there's plenty of time for it.
Unless you can have them by April twenty-nine.
So...
That's the other proposal, baby.
So, I mean, I think that helps. Kevin, can you think of other things we need to, as we re...
That's not to say you couldn't combine Community Crossings and that to get this one done.
In April, is that, are there other things you think we need to know from the...
Other than just day-to-day problems, accounting now and then, no?
I know when we talked, you know, with Jeff at the last meeting, that there's just a lot of ongoing projects and budget, and of course, nothing was to be, you know, if we would, even if we get the OPR funding, it would be next year, but it looked like the town council could swing, you know, their portion of that next year. I mean, at the time, it was, you know, over two hundred, it was around two hundred and twenty thousand that would need to be available in twenty-twenty-two to do that.
Twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two, I'll have a hundred and nine, about a hundred and nine thousand for paving, which we would use as a match for Community Crossings, which is what we did this year with our nine streetments that are getting ready to be done. So that will be half of it, anyway. And I don't, I, there's, paving restricted, we were talking about that at one of the other board meetings.
Yeah.
And that just has to go toward paving projects, but I don't know if it can be used as a match, I don't see why it couldn't.
What are we putting in restricted? I can't even tell it doesn't need it, fifty.
It's required, or, I'm sorry, I'm talking about NPH restricted, it's fifty percent of your distribution.
Fifty percent of distribution, okay.
What are you talking about, right? Twenty-two.
Yeah.
Rock.
And that's street repairs and projects, and it is required in half of that?
Yeah, we come up with one, we come up with one ten, you come up with one ninety. That's the original thing. So it sounds like you're still good in twenty-twenty-two, unless, again, the other thing that's different is, everything is skyrocketing, my guess is, if we throw enough money, everything's getting bigger, which can torpedo our plans.
Yeah, materials are crazy, if you can get...
So...
You don't know. You guys were talking about the design part with Structure Point. Do you remember Ballpark, what they were thinking that the overall construction cost was going to be? I know that was...
Yeah, it was kind of depending on what they thought the total cost of the project would be, they do it as a percentage, but I think if you want to talk with Deckard a little bit, we can maybe, we'll set another, talk with Norman, we'll set another...
This guy.
Council meeting.
So would you guys like to...
I mean, another stormboard meeting, and we'll, we'll talk.
Would you guys want me to open up the dialogue with Roger to try to get a cost comparison?
Well, apples to apples.
Kind of thing, talks.
I wonder if Structure Point would bid it with no change orders, like Roger, because then you can compare an apples to apples as compared to, you know, I, I mean, I assume they would, but I don't know.
Well, I don't know if they would.
It might be a conversation to have, though, just so...
Well, if they don't, again, if they're not, that's, if they're not willing to indemnify that, then it's an important factor, but...
Yeah.
So I know it might, you know, sometimes it's hard, and we've run into this in the past, you know, you think you have everything in line, and then you dig deeper, and, oh, well, this one, this one, this one, this one, and, of course, what I mentioned, that has to be accounted for somewhere.
It's just hard to do land things based on GIS, because GIS is never to be historically unreliable, and so you, you really have to have boots on the ground to be able to give a definitive on those type of things.
So the two things we can do, engineering, finance, you know, see what...
Well, we will revisit the engineering thing.
And then also the financing issue, if Cindy, if you would look into maybe, okay, what's the OPR possibilities, how that money...
Yeah, I'm trying to see if there's a number in here, but I haven't found it yet.
So, so there's, there's enough resources there to pay for it?
Well, I was whispering, not to interrupt you, not like whispering behind your back, but it was, there may be a possibility, if you can combine, if you're doing the Community Crossings, and perhaps again in August, it might happen, you might be able to combine the two programs to help get enough funds to complete.
One of the problems we had with, we can't do two of the plan, because the roads weren't bad enough, and we couldn't directly link the drainage problems to where we could get them in, or we thought we had a chance to get them as part of Community Crossings. Now, if we can, if we made a lot around and do the whole neighborhood, that would be good, but...
Well, the passer ratings that I have in place for them, I think, would support it.
Would have supported now.
We'd be very attractive to detour down the roads for...
At times, I mean, this thing keeps dragging on, so it's...
All hand trucks use this for it.
For sure.
That sounds like pretty heavy project.
Well, we'll get Norman, we'll set another meeting, and we can revisit that.
Oh, yes, sir.
I got him locked, like some sticker shop last week.
It looks like it might be six hundred thousand.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Cindy, with as much, as much medicine, as much money as you can, and that means...
Thanks, sir.
Apparently, one of her two reports, one of her two reports. I just asked him about, it looks like he's sticking collars, they want to get a change, there's more ruin in those anyway, I don't know how the suit package or something, but, you know, for everybody driving around, you know, it's really appreciate Jack's room. That's one thing I asked him about on there, radios are being issued, invoice received.
Not the new from the clerk's office.
So what are we waiting on there, just...
I'm actually not waiting on anything, it's just a matter of when the clerk's office is going to submit, if there are any more ticket reimbursement to submit to us. When he says clerk's office, he's meaning courthouse.
Okay. Well, I'm talking about the radios, and what's received, we have, we paid that?
I don't, I don't have to invoice, he has it.
We received the money, we have to, we have to pay that to be reimbursed, right?
We haven't received the money either.
Well, we can't get it till we pay it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So it looks like, Cameron, you're going to some drug re-recognition expert training for the month?
Florida.
Next week.
First two weeks are going to be in Indianapolis, to be at the Lawrence Police Department, with the field training portion of that training in Jacksonville, Florida, for seven to ten days.
I tried to go around, I think, last meeting, Randy said you working on some of the homeless...
Essentially, yes. The, the way it's been explained to me, we go down there, they put us up, or state puts us up wherever, and then we go to homeless shelters, to drug rehab centers that are, you know, actively taking people coming in that are high on anything and everything. You know, we're not there in a law enforcement capacity, we're there to, to learn and understand, like, okay, this person took ecstasy thirty minutes ago, these are the signs and symptoms of, you know, what this drug does to you, and the same for meth, and heroin, and fentanyl, and all the other, you know, wicked stuff that's out there right now. And it gives, gives me and anybody else that follows the opportunity to testify in court as experts, you know, for prosecution.
What's the date on that?
Uh, for which one?
Lawrence.
The twenty-six through the sev- seven, twenty-six through the seven.
And then the week following that immediately?
No, that's...
Or is that the end of another office?
June fifteenth through the twentieth, or the twenty-first. I've got the exact dates on the email, I can't, I can't remember exactly, but it's right around there.
So you have your invoice up?
On the invoice for the radios, so you don't have it, it has to be paid for us to be reimbursed.
I am understanding that Randy has the invoice, I have not been given a copy of invoice, therefore, I haven't paid it, nor have we received the funds.
But it's a couple months out now already, isn't it? Those radios were purchased and...
Well, yeah, but they didn't until they, we can't pay, and apparently, they just invoiced Randy, so...
And I don't know if, I mean, are, is that money coming in? I didn't know if he had a timeframe on that, if that money was coming in.
Might want to check with about the invoices, and, yeah, it's been a few months, you guys had those for a while, I would say.
But they were just installed, or they installed after the office.
Well, otherwise, it's not asking you yet, so apparently, they're not too concerned.
Oh, asking for their money.
So can you get the roof fixed, got the contract, pre-contract?
It's a busy time, anybody.
Yeah?
Lumber is extremely expensive, too, so...
I think somebody stepped up to repair that.
Yeah, somebody did, but he's super busy making a lot of money.
Yeah.
So, do we need a tarp down there till we get it fixed?
Well, somebody better do something about the mold, too, we better remediate that.
Whoa, 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 check this out, let's get the, if you looked inside the office, you would, the tarp's not on the table, another K nine? No, 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 another K nine, yeah. Did you read? I, I don't... Yeah, if I read this right.
Yeah.
When we raise enough money, we'd like to add another K nines, and, oh my gosh. Well, we'll have to talk to...
What, what's the status of our current K nine? Is it?
I don't know.
Is anything said yet?
There's a court date, I have my next court date in June.
Yeah, I don't know, my gosh.
It's still up there.
I was, I was, I was on the fence of the last K nine, but, anyway, that's not for future talk. And he's working some shit, taking time off.
What about the electric department for done at the park? That's all, the electric boxes are re-installed. They are.
What then?
Down at the park, the electricity's back.
Yeah, yeah, we got the meters put back in. So you got, you got meters for, are you talking about for the food trucks?
No, he's, he's saying...
Oh, you ready for me yet?
Yeah.
No, he needs outlets for the cameras.
He says they're installed, and they're just waiting on the electric department now.
Okay, so have the electric guys got around a little electric, too?
Here, you want, you got one of these?
Yeah, I don't think I have one of those, but, that's okay.
Got them.
You have all of them?
Okay.
Okay.
So, you ready, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna pass these around, and take one, pass it down. Sure. So first up, direct me to go ahead and make a recommendation for our bulk water, talking with Randy and Mandy here in the office. Our, our production cost was point zero zero seven per gallon, and our current rate, or previous rate, was point zero zero three six, I believe, and our proposal is to take that up to point zero one zero, that would put you about three thousandths above your profit margin per gallon, and for loads over one thousand gallons, a flat fee, or loads one thousand gallons or less, just a flat fee of ten dollars on that.
Are we still getting another one?
I think it's pretty reasonable. Like I said, you're not making a huge profit on that by any means, but you're not taking a huge loss, so that's just our suggestion.
I'm ready to make the motion, we approve.
Do we have anybody still sneaking it out of there? I don't think so, it's awful hard to when they're writing down the meter numbers.
They try to fudge on the numbers sometimes, but it's pretty easy when you got the guy before you, I mean, it's kind of an operating thing, so, I think we're getting a pretty good grasp.
You're welcome.
I just made one.
Say.
All favor, bye.
All right. Thank you. Electric meters for the water pump house station down there, we, we had a quote from a group, and it was like ninety-eight hundred dollars, I think, it was significant to put a metering down in there. We re-examined that with Dan Gainer, and Dan feels that we can do that for four thousand on the high side ourselves. His feeling would be probably between three and fifty-five hundred. So to me, that's a lot more palable, to give us an idea of our actual power consumption for water production.
Makes sense.
Have your well pleasure, if you would like for me to direct our electric department to install those.
I will make that motion.
Say.
All favor.
All right. Update on the split tree at the corner of McCarroll Road in Pennsylvania, I got a second quote, first quote was twenty-six hundred, and the second quote was eighteen hundred. I'm going to disregard that for the time being. I talked with Brett, and we looked at it, he feels pretty comfortable that, he thinks he can take that down, as well as some of the other trees in the park.
And it won't fall on anything?
It's, it's hairy, but I would rather, Brett's going to make sure, he's going to look out for his lines.
Okay.
So, you know, that's...
Is that one directly across from, like, close to the front, is that tree dead? It looks pretty dead to me, as you go in the park, like, if you were going in the main entrance, it's right there on the right?
That little...
It's a big one, actually.
You might have noticed that one.
You know the one I'm talking about?
Mm-hmm. I noticed it's dead, though.
Oh, maybe it just hadn't leaked out yet, I just thought it was bad, but...
I also got an opinion given to me on the catalytic tree, with the hole there.
Get rid of it. The one that you can see, the holes down the sink, it's on this side?
But what I'm told, and you probably know this, is that hole's been there for...
It is really cool.
It is cool.
Couldn't we just top it, leave the hole there?
That's possible, I mean, it's still live tree.
Oh, okay.
You know, it's, it's not dead, but it, it's old, it's probably got, you know, that much live wood on the inside of the hollows. And old beech trees get like that, too, they get hollowed out inside, but I may, may hold off on that, and see if I can get some other opinions on it. But anyway, that's what we're doing with the tree there.
You know who you could check with? Alan Ader, he's sort of like a tree expert.
Ooh, I'll do that, thank you. Had a request from, it was Tyler from Structure Point regarding South Market public meeting format, they would like to know if you prefer in-person meetings, hybrid meetings, which would be kind of what we're doing tonight, in-person along with broadcast or online, or just simply a straight online warehouse.
Chief is.
Yeah, yeah, your guess is as good as mine, it probably would cost us to have a...
We'll do a Zoom meeting for less than thirty minutes, referring.
Yeah.
We never have a very good turnout.
We never have very good turnout.
Well, is it something you just want to throw in the agenda on a regular board meeting? May not take that long to go through.
Request one person only.
End on your structure point.
Uh huh.
Okay, so you would rather have an in-person? You guys come eat your crap.
It's really good. It's just their time being here. Well, they're charging mileage, too. And if they eat a meal.
Well, why don't we just do a hybrid then?
Oh, fine.
Yeah, you don't need him in person.
Yeah.
You guys are in person, and it's open to the public. Just have him up here.
We just need some kind of ability to, you know...
Computer looks like it'd do Zoom fairly.
There you go. Okay. We got a projector. We could put him on a wall.
No, seriously.
Yeah.
White surface.
We've done that before back there.
Sure.
And like I've got, and it's like one of the owls, that's the video conference that you guys could borrow, and they can see everybody in this room and has a speaker and microphone both. So if there's comment, you guys are welcome tomorrow. It just connects right into the laptop or computer that you're using.
Well, nice.
And if you bring a projector, it should, it would connect it to projector as well.
He said nine.
Do you want to set that?
Should we do it for our next meeting?
Or during our next meeting?
Yeah.
First thing, man? First thing.
Tell them to make it about fifteen minutes, ten to fifteen minutes.
Okay. So you opted for the hybrid?
Yes.
Okay. All right. All right, Mr. Larson. I also had a request from Ben Mitchell, who's out at Paradise Bay, and asked if we had a durapatcher. I said, yeah, we've got a durapatcher. We don't have a hat box. And he's been looking for some guys to come out there and do work on their asphalt because they're going to have a chip to seal them. I said, I don't think that we can do that.
No, because out there across from Neinsville, they ask, and we thought it'd be a good opportunity. I don't remember why, but it's not. We can't do it.
Well, we're not a construction firm, you know, and I think that requires a whole different liability.
Yeah, we can't do it. There's a statute for this. We actually tried to do that a couple of times.
He's the one that threw a wall in.
So...
On our money-making venture.
And that's immediately what came to mind, to me, you know, but maybe it's a little threatening.
They don't like this anyway. It's okay.
All right, thank you. I'll let Mr. Mitchell know. I do have some hiring for part-time workers. I'd like to hire Ben Link, Logan White, and Jake Roberts. Their start date would be May thirty-first, and end date would be around August first. I also have another person in mind. Since those guys are so short, they're only two months, and we're budgeted for a little bit more than that, I may discuss with you and Randy, too, about the possibility of bringing in a fourth that might be able to be with us a little bit longer than just the summer.
That's how very long.
Yeah, yeah. So anyway, I'll talk to you more about that, but if you could, give me approval to hire those three.
Make the motion we hire that seasonal employee.
I'll say.
All in favor?
All right.
Good.
Hey, I don't, before I forget, and that floor is gone. Do you remember we put in, like, eight new hydrants? But I thought it was, it might have even been ten, but I thought they gave us a number. Do you remember that? I thought it was going to kind of be a phase thing.
U-Max did?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we haven't, we put those in, but we haven't ever talked about anymore. It's, I don't know if it's something we should probably ask.
Well, no, we got, we have money in the fire protection.
Yeah.
And I think Jim Veach told me how much it was, like thirty-five, four thousand dollars that we have. He thinks we can, no, I'm sorry. Don't quote me on the numbers, because like, bottom line is, we think we can do four or five hydrants with the money that we have.
Okay. Can he put them in on me? We have U-Max.
Yeah, I think you would...
U-Max, you put ours in.
Yeah, I think you would contract that.
Okay.
Wait, a couple things, Jim. Go through all the emails.
Yes.
The Bradfield thing over there on...
Oh, good call.
Did you guys read that?
I did.
Sorry.
Well, I mean, least disruption the best, I guess, to any street. We have a hit and we cut a street. But they recommend their opinion recommendation, like drill some holes, see what it looks like, and see what we actually need to do with that. I mean, that's what I would recommend.
Yeah, I think they've, they've already identified that there's a structure there, and, you know, it's off the property of, of our property, but it's on our street.
Get soil samples and...
Yeah.
Sandy, you probably loop on this, aren't you?
Yes, Jeff, copy.
So...
How good are we on the hook for that hole?
Good job. No, it was...
No, it's funded through the state.
Yeah, they're granted.
Yeah.
So who contacts them with our Jeff? So we need a motion on this?
Yeah, probably.
I'll move.
All in favor?
I mean, if you have an opportunity to get taken care of, but you already got an application in, I would suggest just doing it.
Yes.
If you're concerned about your street collapsing.
Well, how long have you been there?
Fifty years. Why don't you guys replace that street at some point?
It hasn't changed.
This one's on East York.
Yeah.
West York.
Okay.
Right there in Jack's. That's fairly new pavement, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yep, and that was just done.
Yeah.
But yeah, it, if they think it's sand filled, according to what I read, didn't believe it's sand filled, but they wanted to test the soil and just see if anything issues. So, okay, well, we'll...
You can't make contact with them until they proceed.
So this, another thing, D H S grant.
Yes.
So we're going to fence off infrastructure.
Yeah. Chris O'Brien, the EMA director over here, we've been talking about this for a while, about the availability of D H S grants. And I talked to him about what some of our high-risk things were. I was aware of it.
What about the water towers?
You would have to really work to climb up that water tower. It could be done because we have safety cages on it. They're locked, padlocked. You, you know, kids find a way. Anybody else would have a place.
Oh, we have, we have.
Oh, yeah. But, you know, our wellheads in our water treatment plant are just, they're wide open and they're included areas.
In the stream or something?
So to me, that was a high-risk area as far as I'm concerned.
Well, yes, of course, it's out there alone.
I think it came out, again, dunk on it. I should have written this down. The application that I turned in was for two hundred and five thousand dollars for fencing seven-foot-high fence with one foot, three strand barbed wire, double-wide gates for access. I looked at doing smaller parcels just around the structure, but that prevents future growth, and I think it also protects our property a little bit better. So we'll see.
Okay.
They, it's submitted.
Is this at the wells?
At the wellheads and also at the water treatment plant or pump house.
Is that registered for a webinar that I saw in the...
American Rescue Plan?
Yeah, there's some more, possibly some more funding available, and it said Rockville might be available.
You might have heard of that A R P fund, too, because they had infrastructure listed as one of the things under that code.
Good.
The A R P money that's coming in or...
Oh, actually, I have that on my agenda.
Which you have to have a ordinance to create a fund to put it in.
Yeah, because I do have it down on my plan here, the webinar.
The good news is I already have an ordinance drafted. I just need to tweak, so you'll have it.
Well, it's due tomorrow, so...
Infrastructure is going to be...
We're eligible for five twenty, so...
Cool.
With some strings attached.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah, that's, I don't know the details, so...
It is a federal regulation on, and I didn't read the whole regulation. I have a footprint solution.
Okay.
And then I'm totally...
Thank you, folks.
Yes, Jim.
Okay, Randy. Okay, I have a lot, but I'll be glad. Plans are going to be now two eight four four thirty, two forty-three.
So I was just looking through those. I see we bought one with a three blower gap for the wastewater plant.
Yes, that was, we're replacing the three. That was a purchase we approved last year for this year.
Forty-one thousand eight fifty-five.
Yep.
So we got two more of those over the next couple of years.
Yep.
Just here, shit, this stuff. Bonds?
Bonds and payroll.
Bonds and payroll. Oh, what's this? We've got hydraulic, hydraulic pump accessories, eighty-one hundred dollars.
Little left station pump.
Left station.
Thirty, thirty-six east.
Thirty-six.
Yes.
You said a slug removal on there, twenty thousand?
Uh huh.
Did you see that?
Yeah, we have slug removal. We have twenty thousand. That was...
That's an annual, a couple times a year, I think.
Did you ever, did you ever resolve the farming on the property deal?
No, I'm expecting proposals.
Some moves approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I read the minutes. I can make a motion.
I'll second your motion on the issue.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Got willing adjustments for four thousand, two ninety, fifty-six, and I have one additional statement that's not included in there. What we do on those, and you guys all get those copies, but we kind of run through those, get the receipts from, if there's a legal adjustment that takes place. I will initial on those, just that I have reviewed them and solved it for approval, and then, of course, they're submitted to you for that final approval for that decision. So I do have the ones in there. If you've got any questions, I've got receipts and explanations on. But I do have one that I kind of need to run by you all.
Randy had a property bill hold, but she still...
So I don't know if you want to glance through there, if you've got any questions or want to know anything about...
I make a motion we approve adjustments.
Okay.
I'll say.
All in favor?
The only one, I have an additional adjustment that was submitted for property in College Street. There was over two hundred and fifty-four dollars in gallons that Randy threw, which makes an adjustment of just under twenty-five hundred dollars.
Was it me, was it?
Uh huh.
It wasn't me, was it?
No, no. The statement was given to us that this is a landlord-type situation. The guy that owns or that rents the property that's not living here actually lives and works in another state, but his wife lives here. Furs wasn't working. The tenant was a quarter.
Yes.
And...
It kind of sounds like you.
Didn't want anyone in, inside the property. It was an embarrassment. Didn't want any... Well, the pipes froze and they busted.
I did a wellness check on him one time. It was a dead winner, and the air conditioner was running, and there were never, ever been lights on.
So this was one that I just didn't feel comfortable based on that explanation.
It's true.
I felt like you all needed a further explanation before. Do we, do we adjust this? It's twenty-four eighty-two forty for the tenant, which has been evicted in the process, so it's backed down to the landowner, or do we take this upon what the tenant due to negligence? Is kind of where, where we stand. So it's essentially your call, but if I presented a twenty-five hundred dollar adjustment, I think there's justifiable questions there.
She drives a nice Volvo.
The owner or the tenant?
That black one?
No, it's white.
Is it fair to tell the owner?
It's in the tenant's name?
No, Norm Ricketts, yes. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, and they cleaned out the house yet?
Yes. They're still waving the windows open, and they wore white.
The big white two-story?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah, they had to wear the serious in Miami five.
Why don't we go after the tenant?
She moved to North Dakota.
They've been evicted. I mean, we, I believe that parents said there is a forwarding address available, but that was fixed on your decision.
So they haven't asked for a correction. The tenant hasn't.
Whose name was he?
The landlord, I believe, is the...
Who, 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 he told you it was who's name?
The tenant.
The tenant.
So if they haven't asked for a correction?
Well, yeah, I think it's the current bill, you know, or final billing. The tenant, the landowner has put their deposit in at cleaning the house up. It's a matter of, you know, do you write it off as a furnace wasn't working, pipes broke?
Have we gone after the previous tenant?
No.
Well, we should at least try.
We have not.
I hate to go after the landlord. I mean, at this point, he's trying to salvage the mess.
He's going to sell if he said this was his last go-round.
Okay.
I mean, we can put it in and bill to the tenant.
He lives in Bransford.
And then we can further on pass it to...
This is a vehicle title, but they're not working, and we don't own real estate, right?
So what's the point you're seeing?
Well, I'm saying that...
Just give us this...
Potentially put a lien on the title to their vehicle, but other than that, you know, barring them having a checking or savings account.
He's on the house. He used to work out of town.
He apparently still does. He, they always make their payment. They pay you every month, but he's never here.
He never, ever saw.
He calls from wherever it is that he lives. Very nice guy, but...
Well, my life... It might be one of those things where if they will pay a certain amount, maybe you split the difference or you split a certain percentage of it.
Well, let's try.
Right.
Yeah.
Try which?
Try to...
Try to get them to pay.
We'll try them to pay. Put a smiley face in the bill.
That is the test.
Your fault, Paige.
It'd be hard to enforce that on the landlord.
Great, we appreciate it.
Actually, there's statutory language that prevents us from enforcing on the landlord or legislature.
Yeah.
Remember, somebody didn't call. You could at least shut it off at the meter outside.
Okay, we got that figured.
Okay, so I'm just going to make a note on here that we'll issue a final bill, and that will just be an update for later.
Or anybody want to be a landlord?
Okay. March banks, all balanced, all flagged there.
Motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Josh Laurel had brought me a letter regarding the vet science program at Park Heritage High School. He's just stating, should the zoning board make a favorable recommendation? This project does not require an improvement permit as cited in ordinance one five two point zero one. The permit fee would be fifty dollars for this project. He's basically stating just being good neighbor and community-minded, that he would recommend that an application be submitted by the school and all applicable building codes are followed, a permit issued in the duration of the project, and that the town of Rockville Council waive the permit fee at the fifty dollars. I don't know where they are with moving forward. It's not really a rezoning issue, but maybe more of a school within their school guidelines. So I know he and I talked about...
Hammer sent something. I should...
What are you still doing that for?
Yeah. Gary Hammer sent something, I thought. We just needed a meeting.
Add zoning or just a re-add something with the school?
Zoning.
Okay.
Were they going to contact the neighborhood?
They did, and they submitted something. Their attorney did, but I think we just need to get a meeting, Randy, with the zoning board to address it.
And I wasn't. If you're working with Gary on that...
But I actually think it's, it's zoned in a way that's kind of weird. I can't remember exactly what the zoning term was, but...
Multi-use? I was going to say multi-use.
You know, I'd have to go look in the file, but it's zoned in a funny way. You wouldn't expect it to be zoned how it is. But, yeah, we just need a meeting with the BZA.
Okay, and I think his main question then is...
I make a motion we waive the fee if the zoning makes a...
It's a new forward.
Say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have, I do have utility bills to be written off, and Nick, I cannot remember the dollar amount. Was it three hundred?
I think it was three hundred.
Or five?
I thought it was three.
Okay. If it is three hundred, we do have three on here that are deceased customers that fall beneath that limit. I have one that was six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-five cents. Younger girl, no estate or anything made with the mortgage, if we need to. And I have another one. I have one that was six hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty-five cents, younger girl, no estate or any money, we can take it further if we need to, and I have another one.
The problem you run into when they're deceased and there's no estate is you as a creditor have to file to open the estate in order to collect from the estate. Is what the problem becomes, which becomes time consuming.
I'd say we can run that one off for sure.
I think so.
I mean, I've, I've got one more as well that is eleven seventy-four twenty-three, I have total these up here.
Do they have an estate?
And they, I think there's the information on the individual.
And we just have to run through the court system and see if they even like filed, but chances are.
I mean, on the two, we can be open to do that if that's what they decided, or.
Does everybody else fell under the threshold?
Just have, I have total five that are written there, though.
We each signed it.
If you want to approve the write-off on all of those, or if you want me to get with Nick to pursue.
I would say the two bigger ones.
Well, probably money ahead, it's just following his contractual.
It's like, not really.
Not really, I mean, you know.
It's small clubs, dead collection.
I mean, too, we, we abused Nick enough, I, I, like, you throw him a bone, you.
I'm just glad I'm the D.
I second that, so you make a motion, I second.
I do. All in favor?
Aye. I'm actually sorry.
Harbinging agreement, um, between the town of Rockville and Mike Jeffries, if you want to continue to do deals, Rockville five, Rockville seven, as per the one with the agreement permit. Um, this is kind of just a reoccurring thing, I don't think somebody.
That's the application, he does.
We just kind of changed the date on this, it's just kind of a temporary type agreement between the town of Rockville and him.
I make a motion, we continue the agreement.
Present.
I mean, if you want me to get Dave's signature later, I can't.
Oh, we have our files, it was clear to work. Uh, you move, I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then I just have requests from Jason Gaines, um, they are doing a bill more, the federal fire department's doing an ATV, UTV, ranger, whatever, right? On April twenty-fourth, um, he approached me on road closure between Jefferson and New York, um, Jefferson, between New York and the thirty-sixth, on April twenty-fourth, from eleven to five, their stop will be at the thirty-sixth. So I told him that I'd be happy to ask for permission for that.
It's, it's, yeah, it's dog park party.
Yeah, it's going to be eleven to five.
I'm waiting to hear back.
So, okay, let's talk about this, kind of, this idea here, uh. I don't know, I, I don't know, I mean, do we do it for?
We do it for Mark every time he wants to.
Yeah, but do we want to expand that out of the, I don't know, I mean, I'm kind of up here, aren't we?
I think their stop is wanting to be a lunch there at the thirty-sixth, so it's a matter of parking is.
Right.
I'm guessing is why they're on, it's probably just.
You know, we can always, uh, back off, we can try and see how it works, I don't know why it's any different than the other bins, they seem to go pretty good. Police want to chime in here?
I don't think the police have any problem with it, personally.
Yeah.
I mean, if it was for a for-profit thing or something, then maybe.
Yeah, uh, who puts out the cones?
Usually the police.
Yeah, yeah, uh.
I mean, we do it for, like you said, we do it for.
For Mark every time. So, uh, the twenty-fourth of April, someone needs to put out cones.
Yeah.
You working that day?
Negative.
Negative.
You'll pass it on.
Yes, I will, okay. I guess, I move.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I already told you that I've got the webinar tomorrow, to, to receive the more information, I'll update you with those details, um, there are stipulations on spending of that money, so.
What, 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 what is that, buddy?
Um, they're, they're calling it the American Rescue Plan, or the AARP, like, they mentioned.
It's Joe Biden's infrastructure funding, along with all the other things we funded.
There is a required ordinance that has to take place before.
So it's just funny, buddy, like.
Can you very work, can you very get that ready?
I have an ordinance that I drafted through the county that I can easily translate into.
Ordinance.
But there's a, there's a legal aid on how you use it, but infrastructure was one of the things listed, um, so was internet development.
So how's it distributed, based on population and incorporated community?
Probably.
The person that job that scheduled fee that I received, made us eligible for five twenty.
Well, nice, and we can use it for infrastructure.
Hey, with some strings, we'll, I'll have to.
Should we tell Stormwater Board?
I'll have to.
I already looked at the detail.
Yes.
I mean, and again, a lot of it is intended to make up for any potential loss you may get in other tax distribution. I mean, that's why I encourage people is, make sure you're understanding what your loss is going to be, you won't add.
Next year is going to be bad.
Right, I mean.
And then, if you think there's extra, then use it for projects. I wouldn't plan on using half million dollars for your storm water.
It'd be used for some replacement.
Legal fees or something.
Legal fees definitely probably would replace.
The bone? The bone?
But it's a significant portion of money, and you do have some leeway there because you're revenue loss, so.
We're anticipating revenue loss next year, has anybody talked about that, looking into it, I mean, I'd say, where, where are we expected to see it, are we talking net asset value decreasing, or?
There is, there is, on the letter, I pray, Nick, you've probably seen it, but it tells you two areas to go into specifically, to find out what that loss is, from, from twenty nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, all the way through twenty-four. So there's a way to get to that number, I mean, I just did it like back in the napkin kind of thing, for the county, and.
And?
Their, their distribution would be like three-point-two million.
Yes.
Um, and probably close to three million is going to come out of loss. I mean, when you look at MVH and you look at other tax distribution, so I would, I would encourage you to look what that number is, it'll tell you where to go to finance.
Well, who can, who's going to do this? Who can do this for us?
You know what letter I'm talking about, Randy, I'm sure I've got it on there, I just, yeah.
We, we should probably have an idea, I mean, when, when public safety is some of that kind of money that we're talking about, isn't it?
Some of your loss.
I sent both of them.
Your economic development, your public safety, and your certificate, something. Cert, something certified, certify shares, thank you. Those three areas, and your MVH.
MVH and public safety.
Public safety we can use.
That's what you're going to lose, though.
Right.
We're potentially just.
Well, did you say they're going to be down three million, and we got a turn a thousand to three million?
No, their distribution is three-point-two-eight, if you go in and do these calculations of, of the potential loss, that's a little closer to over two million.
Two million? Holy moly.
So she's saying don't use her funds?
Well, yeah.
I wouldn't plan on big projects personally, with your funds.
Okay, well, we will, like, we're not even here.
That's all I'm saying.
And, uh, we'll go from there.
Put a bit of fun and legal in there, too.
Now, you do have to spend it by twenty-twenty-four.
Well, we have no problem.
No. So that's the only thing.
Right, then if you spend it, it's, you know, a better idea, you offer.
Well, we have these, one pump goes out to sewer, boom.
Otherwise, you got to give it back to them if you don't spend it.
Well, we'll, we'll. Well, I have more legal questions.
Yeah, it won't be hard to spend on that.
Not more, just.
Compensate.
Okay.
And then.
I think building crews to.
Yeah. See, I'm confused about your last one.
Well, it may not show, because I think my last.
It's not on the fund report.
My la, the last one I received today actually is dated for tomorrow, I just received the, the order of the state, so we have been paid now all up to date, so.
So that, that.
If I add another, I think another fifteen thousand to that, because the money I got last week is, should be included, yeah, it's included in this total, but I got fifteen thousand, let's see, I'm receiving it tomorrow, and that will be everything to date. I, we have sent a reminder in email to Endoc a couple of weeks ago, touching base with invoices that I have never been paid for, I think they kind of got behind on things too last year with everything, so we have, we have received, I've got a couple pending, waiting on canceled checks and stuff to send the reimbursement.
So where are we on that resolution?
But we are up to date.
New funds, the fund resolution.
So I have three resolutions left to do that I haven't done, and then I have this ordinance we just did.
Oh, you're next, okay, sorry.
I'm tuned.
Um, all right, so I don't have new resolutions on transparent funds for you, but I do have a whole boatload of other stuff I can do.
Hey, has anybody been by the old recycling place, completely cleaned up?
Um, you also noticed that the, that house that was by CBS on thirty-sixth is being renovated, they're working on it, they had people there, um, so that's in the process of being converted, it was purchased by somebody, so there's new ownership.
Private citizen?
I, private citizen, yeah, um, I don't, I don't recall who, Randy was, or maybe it was Cameron was talking to him.
Yeah, I went and talked to him, it's a, it's firm of Indian apples, that's really all I can tell you, but their, their plan is, once the process, you know, finishes up, purchase it, renovate it, and put it back on the market.
Livers, ah, there you go.
So they're already doing some stuff, I think, but, um.
Stabilization efforts.
Okay. Um, there are two other properties Randy and I talked about, there's the Erie property where we had the, the issue with the foundation, with our former, um.
Yeah.
You know.
Employee.
We had a citizen complaint again, it is in really bad shape, it's listed for sale.
How about we sold it?
No, the one on Erie.
Would you buy it?
It's the one where the foundation got hit by the, the skid steer, or loader, or whatever, with our former, whatever. Um, anyway, it's listed for sale, I don't know if you want me to cite it again, or handy to cite it again, and at one point, we were talking about possibly just purchasing it and reselling it, I don't know if you want me to approach that conversation.
I hope that I could just demo it.
They have not foreclosed their interest on it, so I can't really.
We got, well, well, it's all about money, price, what's the price?
Uh, last time, I think they said like seven grand or something like that, or.
Okay, and we have to tear it down.
Right.
And what's the lot worth?
I don't know.
How big is it?
But, I mean, tearing it down is the biggest expense.
Well, you're looking at seventy, ten thousand for a smaller house.
Couldn't the fire department use it for a training exercise?
You could ask, I don't know.
The lot's probably worth ten tops.
I don't think they can do that anymore.
I think not.
Um.
E D A gets involved.
Not, the in, inside town limits is going to be an issue, I think, too, but, um.
What if accident?
Um, anyway, so as that, there was one on, uh, oops, by the elementary school on York Street that Randy was looking into, there's two properties out east on High Street that we've been messing with, that are making progress, but now one of them's still in jail, so.
Not progressing.
But, so we have some, some that are progressing, we've had some that have been successful, though, I'd say about half the ones we've filed while I've been here have resolved their issue.
Couldn't he be a trustee and go work on the house?
No.
I'd have to find out who this is sometime.
Um, but anyway, so about half the ones we've filed since I've been the attorney have been resolved, we have the one by the high school got resolved, we have the Harrod Avenue property's been resolved.
What about down here next to Scaquel King?
Those are good, did you get, or did you get some?
No, I haven't filed, no, I haven't, um, as far as sale on it, um, I need to, though. As far as things to do, though, we do have things that have been sent, there's the third am mendatory agreement to power sales contract between IMPA and the town of Rockville, they're asking that this be signed, indicating that you guys have amended the contract to April first, twenty-fifty, um, with thirty years prior to the current date of termination, to give notice to get out of the contract. This was the person that came and presented to you last meeting, so this is a proposed contract to that, um, with it, there's a certificate of the town of Rockville, Indiana, where the council and president certified that they've signed it and they're willing to sign it, there's a ordinance that has to be passed allowing, or directing that it be signed, and there's a letter from the town attorney to them indicating you guys have the authority to be able to enter into such a contract.
Okay.
So I'm asking that you guys give authority for all these to be signed, I assume it'd be the vice president signing, uh, or have Dave sign, come by the office and sign, since they have it predetermined for Dave to sign, um, but give him the authority to sign on behalf of the town.
I'd say she can just sign her name and put BP to sign it.
She could, um, and then.
They shouldn't pre-spose.
So you have a certificate to be signed, you have the agreement, you have an ordinance, and my letter to be approved.
I make a motion.
You have to pass the ordinance.
You have to pass the ordinance.
Motion, we pass the ordinance and allow everyone necessary to sign, so.
I'll, I'll second that.
All in favor?
We had some others. Amendment to the owner-engineer agreement, this is amendment to structure points agreement with you guys on, on the Forty-One North project, there's additional costs because there's been change in ownership of some of the land, there's also been some revisions as to the, how it's going to be carried out, um, so they have an agreement here asking for additional eighteen thousand nine hundred dollars, eleven thousand eight fifteen for additional compensation for final design phase, and seven thousand dollars for additional compensation for right-of-way engineering and land acquisition services.
So is this the final, final redesign?
Is it ever going to be final?
You know, I, I.
Well, I thought the other day came out, about ninety-five percent.
So here's, yeah, it said ninety-five percent here about something.
Final design at ninety-five percent?
Right, so there could be more, I guess.
So does eighteen not get us to a hundred?
That, that should get you, that ninety-five was a status report.
Oh, a status report, okay.
But they do have to do the additional right-of-way services because several of the properties have changed ownership, and the prior agreements were with the prior owners.
Shopco changed, what else changed?
Um.
Sewers.
Sewers, and maybe somewhere else.
And rehab.
Yeah, so basically, all the ones we had settled changed ownership.
Well, the land didn't change, it's the owner.
Right, the new agreements, new appraisals.
Yeah, because they just redid sewers, turned it into like a three-bedroom.
Your appraisals are only good for two years also, so if you don't need, so I asked them, instead of getting new appraisals, to ask their appraiser to indicate that it's the same cost or same value, if that's their opinion.
Well, bottom line, we, we.
You got to be.
We're this far.
So I just need authority for somebody to sign on behalf of the town.
So, given, what do we do? I move?
Motion? I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hart, do you want to, do you want to share the comment that the redevelopment commission gave?
I bet I can imagine it.
No, it was a positive, yeah.
Was this at the last meeting? David was there, I was not.
Oh, that's right.
We talked about the meeting a couple of days after that, but they, uh, yeah, go ahead, you have a memory of it.
Oh, I was going to share was, um, John Pratt specifically made a statement, um, during the meeting that he was, um, very appreciative, um, that, you know, Rockville took the initiative to pay that other remainder of design money over and above what redevelopment had approved, he thought, you know, it showed a great partnership between the county and the town to work in concert, you know, to make the project happen, and, um, I think then that we started talking about the Jackson Jacks building, and maybe using some tip dollars to, you know, try to help there, and he said who would be in favor, just knowing that you guys have put up money towards this project, to then maybe use some central tip dollars to help with that piece, so. Right. Sorry, I forgot you were on up there, Hart, but I just wanted to share that, so.
That's good, yeah.
I know it was painful to spend more money on that, on design, but I think there might be a way to get some, some money to help with another project.
Right.
Cooperation is a good thing.
Yep. Maybe just give the federal.
I would, I would not hold.
Whoever.
Do you know what ordinance number we're on? I don't sign those.
Now.
I think that one's a letter from the.
That, that, that.
There's an agreement that.
Project owner on the Jazz, uh, we have quotes for demo, right?
Yeah, we had estimates.
Estimates.
But.
Well, I, I guess my mind is thinking, okay, next phase, once they are out, we wrap up the tank, key shoe is.
What I would suggest is try to come up with some bids, best, or whatever you want, and put it out to bid.
Welcome to open up the tanks.
I was just going to say, no, I'm not, I'm all here to keep this, but I just wanted to, to say that Oprah did reinstate their light clearance program.
Oh, really?
Which doesn't allow for demolition.
Uh, you, you two should probably talk about that.
Yeah.
That's, that's imperative.
Would, would that count for, for Oprah?
It would, but remember we're.
It'd be quick.
But remember, we're working on a different, maybe alternative to water.
Yeah.
What, so for me to do that, though, can we lump several lighted into that?
You could, there's a max of five hundred thousand dollars.
So let's max, because I have some other pet projects.
Yes, but I'm just saying, they, that had been suspended for a while, but it was reintroduced in twenty-twenty-one for the light clearance program.
Well, that's, yeah, we should get right.
If I can't find that, I make.
Right on that.
Well, then it would also be one that would be per.
I have a couple.
You wouldn't have that.
Yeah, the closed, yeah.
It allows for acquisition of blighted properties also.
Right, the only. The only thing that I would say with the light clearance, though, is it states that you can't develop the project for five years, so we would want to verify that doing a parking lot is not developing, um.
I'm afraid that is developed.
Yeah, a lot of.
But we have to, and that's just like, you know, even if there's other properties that Nick has in mind, we probably want to have a conversation about the intent of the property, run it through them, and get their feedback.
Right.
Even if you guys just did grass for five years, it'd be worth it?
Yeah, and when they talk about development, it's usually like turn it, turn it into a park or something like that, but parking lot, we just.
It could be part of the great new deal, because we're going to get some electric car for those.
Yeah, there you go, let's get by.
We'd have to do something with it, when you tear it down, I mean, you get what the hell?
Don't want to take it anyway, you're sore.
Pregnant every night.
Okay. Oh dear, Nick, what else?
Um, I lost my way.
A long time ago.
I think all that's yours now, tag. Um, she stole my thunder on the, the brownfields thing, so I was gonna talk about it.
You gotta get here on.
Brownfield, you mean, uh, your?
Yeah, I was gonna talk about it, but I stole my thunder on that. Um.
Fairly right.
If I think of something, I'll pipe back and I.
Well, and starts with brownfield, you do the recommended that they have, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because state funding's definitely better than local funding.
And will that take care of all the removal of the other things inside, or is that gonna be on that?
No, they'll take care of everything, everything that was inside the building and identified.
It's on Jefferson, wasn't it, on the Jefferson Street side?
Yeah, there really wasn't anything that they located on Jefferson.
I thought there was, in that draft drawing, it had something.
It said that they thought there could be the possibility, but they were pretty.
It was based on the fire pass.
I thought it was like already filled and tested naked.
Okay, if they, if it's been signed off on, then, okay, yeah.
Yeah, they tested the surrounding soil and found nothing, and it had already been filled.
What about on the west side, I didn't look at that map for the west side.
There was only one where they had a concern, so I assume the other one passed too. It was the one that was in the street was the only one.
Which is not part of Rocky, the property that we.
Right, but it's underneath.
And if they found the one, hopefully they found the other one too.
I really thought it would be under old stuff.
But, yeah.
I guess I would say I don't have anything else for right now unless I think of what my other one was.
Okay. My whole business.
Uh, well, one thing, on Rockville Road, did you plan on that water leak patch, Jeff?
This is structure point, the other ones have been signed.
Oh, we had a water leak over there by, um.
That all goes together.
Right there behind the doctor's office. Yeah.
No.
You gotta gravel, you have road back in there now.
No, it's.
What time, you got any plans on it, what, what time, plus we had that issue over there on Howard Street, that was in that sewer parallel area.
This goes to structure point.
On, on Howard, we're gonna throw some dirt patch down on there, or if we have money left over, uh, for payment.
I had another thing. I was getting pencils on the power property.
She lost that much to do that little stretch, I don't.
Right. Where else is really bad, along the school, there by the stop sign down a little bit.
The, the one over there.
Then what?
By Rockville Road.
Need arc front.
Let me talk to Cody.
Try to go to Wilson's house, in the area of Beavis, Chatty Beas.
I got those on the desk.
Okay.
Well, I guess it started to cave in around the edge a little bit, I don't know what.
Needs backfill with you.
I don't know what needs to backfill, are they using peegravel or sand, or are they just using fifty, sixty, seventy?
Probably.
A little bit.
Spent all day Sunday working on those things.
They'll, they'll throw some sand in, throw some sand in around the piping, whatever they propose. Then they'll usually come over with some peegravel, and then put some hundred fifty threes on top of that.
Why, I guess the other thing on that hole, they, they didn't have time to cut it that night as we were repairing it, probably should square it up.
Yeah.
It's just, it's.
Yeah.
I know, one thing I forgot, remember we were supposed to ask, there are some structures down at the ball field, um, that are not insured, and the question was, should the town insure them or should the ball field? The, the ones, the one next to the ball.
Concession stand, the blue building, and then the free, they insured the building behind it.
Oh, but not the one, not the bigger one over by the restroom?
Right.
It's not insured.
We have a little, small shed, right, over there, we store like a lawnmower and stuff.
I mean, I would call it a big shed actually, but not as big.
But there's two, right?
Yes.
Because the ball field, um, last year or the year before purchased a shed and put it over there, so it's theirs, one of the that actually belongs to them, I think they bought it.
Belonged to the park, or to the ball, the one by the bathroom.
Yeah, they, they put that bigger one up, didn't they too, but they don't insure it.
The big blue concession stand building?
Yeah, and also the one.
There's one behind it.
I've been there.
And then there's another one by the bathrooms.
It'd be great if they insure it and then named the town as additional insured.
Well, yeah.
Well, our worker I'm thinking was, is that they didn't ask us if they could buy them, so we should, we should insure it.
Well, yeah, I'm just kinda shocked that they put, uh, scriptures on property that.
I guess I really didn't realize that that mower that Pam uses probably is kept in that shed. I think there's some stuff that's kept in that shed.
It's, it's the shed down at the, by the playground.
Yes.
That's where she keeps her mower and stuff.
By the bathrooms.
The other thing is, they don't have.
They're insured, and if somebody is hurt, then they're gonna come in.
There's a metal, oh, no, pole building there.
Okay, so our town equipment's not kept in their shed?
No.
So then they would need to insure.
I thought a lawnmower or something at some point, because then she keeps extra toilet paper or towel for the bathroom, and shed down there.
But I, I'll check with them and see if we keep anything in that, but, but I'm pretty sure she kept her mower down there in the, uh, little pole building.
Okay.
The nice new one down there.
Yeah, yeah, it's a nicer one.
I'll check.
Okay. Other ones?
So, so the one that you're talking about is the one right next to the restroom?
I believe so, yes. That one and the big blue building, which I think they should insure.
The big blue building.
The concession stand.
Two-story.
Oh.
The one that's in there.
Yeah, that's theirs.
Yeah, that's theirs. But it's somebody's turf on it.
Yeah, I'm sure those are insuring. And I know that the one behind.
But we wanted to name the town as additional insured, if they're insured. Maybe you should write a letter and we'll take it to the next park board. What's your legal name?
Or you can come, yeah. Zach, I'll be there.
You could, I'll just text Zach and tell him what I said.
Okay, there we go.
Did you see the president?
Additional appropriations.
Did the repairs get done with the?
Yeah.
We're ready to fill the pool.
Start in two days?
Was like.
Two days.
Contract, okay.
Did you, did you come to me after I sent you Cam's?
Yeah, a little bit.
I thought I already had. Because there was some.
And Cody is signed up for his test, so that is, he wanted to do it this week, but with the pool getting filled, and then, oh, he's in, I mean, it's just full time for him down there for that, so I think it's the first week of, I think May fifth is his date.
The director went to the pool, is going, a king size, that's a hundred and twenty dollars. Can we get, go ahead.
Send you Cam's. Cause the original I had, that was changed.
I thought I saw you driving, I didn't see you truck the other night.
And then I changed it.
What kind of stuff?
Black.
You didn't have a license?
I think it was a four hundred.
Do you need license?
We don't, we don't.
They, they didn't. Know whose truck that is, it's not his.
Oh, he should, there was a woman in there, surely he hasn't found another one.
That was the last one, I saw him and I took it and I changed it to add a bunch of.
All right, well, let me take a closer look and get, get it done. Um, so there was additional appropriations that park board would like to ask for. For playground equipment, the game time quote eighty-five sixteen, eighty-five thirty-one.
Top of eight thousand.
No, those are part numbers.
Oh.
Yeah.
Do you have it rated right, Sam?
It's one thousand two hundred ninety-seven three cents, and that includes two hundred twenty in shipping and a six hundred eighty-five dollar credit. Or we would have the six hundred and eighty-five dollar credit off of that.
Yeah, you would deduct the six eighty-five.
So what's the total for me?
Well, it's one twenty.
Or just tell me what the, it's twelve ninety-seven minus six, what?
Six eighty-five. It's twelve ninety-seven oh three.
Well, we haven't spent all the money in there yet.
Yeah, we've got.
Uh, let me do.
At Raritan?
Which fund, which fund, are you in the park, I think in the park.
Well, this would be out of, um.
You're coming out of what?
Oh, help me out, Randy.
Well.
You're talking about, you're talking about one foundation funds?
No.
Which one?
No, we didn't want that whole foundation.
Okay, not helping at all, there's park special donation, it's negative.
Um, there's some, you know, I've got the one that I, are you looking at hundred four?
I am.
Yeah, I've got a move, this park special donation was, I think that line was used instead of the park line, so that's gonna be covered, that's enough to be covered, but do you, I mean, what about your?
I can't remember. Are we, are we doing an additional or are we just?
Because there's, we didn't appropriate any money out of that fund, and there's like, what is there, a hundred thousand sitting in there?
Whoa.
You know what I'm talking about.
You're probably on, looking at playground equipment, but being that you only have twenty-four two to deal with in the park without any additional, so is that what you're thinking is that your anticipation is spending that twenty-four two, but in addition to wanting this covered, buy an additional one? Cause you can still, I can still pay for it out of playground equipment, or the verb which wasn't money, but I would, before leaving the year, have to say, okay, well, I'm gonna have to take equipment repairs to cover that.
Yeah.
So I could transfer.
You're looking here, aren't you, you're on this page, right? And you're looking at, 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 at the park fund, so there's what you got in equipment right now. You want to just.
Okay, we can use that then, that's fine.
The equip, you can use the equipment repairs or the playground equipment, you can still use the playground equipment line.
We just have to put money into it.
Transferred out of something else to cover it, if you wanna keep track of exactly what you're.
That's fine, you can.
You know, which makes sense to me.
Songs and stuff, and some other funny things, have you not, are you having Saturday?
Yeah, actually I am, I'm not bringing my dogs.
How rude.
Does it not play well with that? At best weight, don't whether it's a fire or not.
I said don't, don't say don't.
I mean, you know, allow it, allow twenty-four thousand.
So we can do additional appropriations of that, so that's, that's probably.
She's had any healthy distrust through people's judgment.
You're looking above two oh four.
You can still get treats for your dog.
We have that, we're, two oh four, you have that nine.
So far we've got the hot dogs.
We're like, I've spent twenty-four six or twenty-four something other year.
Well, right, with the given amount, without an additional.
That's why we're saying we wanna ask for additional. Does the limerick place?
Well, once we run out.
You'd be good at. Well, when I run out?
I may try to.
I mean, well.
There's Smokey Joe's.
I mean, we still have a lot of to spare at this point.
There's also Joe's Garage Barbecue.
Right, yeah.
In park.
Okay.
But when we run out, well, that's when you.
I take additional.
Okay, okay, so then, we have.
What else you got?
Yeah.
Here we go.
So I'm just, cause they just sent me the notes today, um, so we've got that, and then we've got playground order. Oh, did she already order that?
No, I ordered the swings.
Oh, okay, didn't order the doggy yet.
Because the girding was, oh, I can't remember.
Okay, so we're not ready to move on that yet, because we're waiting on the E F W. Our E V E F W, or what it is.
Not pretty, just.
Okay.
Well, and, I'm trying to remember, we got the, uh, the numbers from Bear, and I showed you what the two differences are for, between the actual E W F and what Bear's was. So I just, I'll, the next meeting we have, you can tell me which way we wanna go on that.
Did you say they were gonna let you know if it would be created as E V R?
Yeah, I, I, see, the heck of this, you know, the, the, the current bears, that's what they put down all over the place, but, you know, I don't know how many schools actually have seen that level of inspection done, so.
So that's on hold, so then, I get, this, just this is in the notes, Rock Hard, repairs are done, caution coming uptown, I've been Rockville insurance. Oh, Kim wanted us to see.
Yeah.
So the pools, the pools repaired, but Kim wondered if insurance would pay for it rather than take it out of the park fund.
Well, we're covered, uh, some way down there, I don't know what else is covered.
But what's our deductible?
Well, that's a good point. How much are repairs?
Fifteen hundred.
That's what I, yes, basically, I don't think it's gonna reach.
File restitution claim with the.
I, I'm keeping track of all the receipts and I've been in touch with the prosecutor.
Okay.
Did you not hear he's selling a king sized hit board for a hundred and twenty dollars? We can go after that.
I think the only thing I'm waiting on, on that is Rock Hard Coatings.
If they put it in, whatever the agreement is, that restitution must be paid, then in order to get off the, for whatever the case is, they'll have to pay restitution. That's why I asked.
So I, I don't think we need, we must have enough money there and to pay for all the stuff that we wanted then.
Okay.
Including fencing and, yeah.
All right.
I mean, I guess I would say as receipts come in, our invoices come in, um, you know, Jeff can look over those and say where the park board anticipates wanting, you know, what funds to use to pay for them.
Yeah.
And then the further we get into the year, if there's something else or more that comes into play.
Do we have Ikea on rent advancing?
No, I usually get locates from them.
Jeff, those.
But I can reach out to them and see what they think, uh, will put us on the schedule.
Those, those two plaques for the benches.
Okay. Metal benches.
Yep. Do you want me to reach out to Brock again, we just don't have Brock, the banner or?
And I got more cords and gearers too.
Okay. Um, can I reach out to the, you know, about that, she didn't return the call, I would message this guy off, and he's still. Do you have a phone call? Maybe I'm on a naughty list now.
Who'd get that sold, take it tomorrow, I might quit some parking dollars that are taller, because just the elevation there, turning in with two cars parked on either side of it, couldn't see it over the hood.
Where was that?
At the ballpark, at the, school's ballpark.
Can we request the school put those in?
I don't know, why not, I think so.
It's also a property.
Yeah, town for part of gay.
I make a bunch of money, sure.
I have it, I have.
Randy has some.
Oh, wait, wait.
Gotta be fast.
I was, I was trying to be quiet and wait my turn. Nick, question for you, where are we on easement for Scott Pet on, for the sewer project?
Very good question.
Nope taken.
Because we cannot move forward on finishing the design until that.
And I'll tell you, I anticipated that, that question also, I'll have it for next meeting.
All right, well, actually, yeah, once these guys sign off on it, then just send it directly to Nathan Peters.
Okay.
Could you leave him the other pretty one?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have to?
I did, very nice, get a sign from her, shot from him.
That is neat.
How about that?
And then, another thing, I just want to share some information, for the New Hope Housing, I know there's been a lot of chatter on Facebook regarding what, what that is and what it's gonna be used for, and this, that, the other, so I just happened to be on a call with Mr. Bonzley the other day, and I shared that with him and asked if there was anything that they would do to just kind of get the word out, so people have the right story, so...
I heard there's a bowling alley.
Casino.
Yeah. Anyway...
Kentucky.
To, to stop all of the crazy, um, he said they have a really good PR person that will start putting together some stuff to have printed in the Sentinel, so just so you know that we are working to at least get the real story out.
She should probably go on the Park County chat, or if you want to speak to her.
Well, I just told you, you can't fix stupid.
Most of the people...
You can have a lot of stupid with her.
Yeah, you can.
Well, I, it gets ridiculous at some point, but the last thing I wanted to share, and I don't know if you guys heard this, and I, sorry that Troy had to go fix something else, but I learned that he was nominated for a really nice award through the Water State Water Association, or wherever they did that French lift conference. I didn't get the name of the award, but I just wanted to congratulate him and thought I'd share that with him. He was recognized in that way at that statewide conference, so...
And he still stays humble.
He does, he probably would have never said a word, I'm sure, but that's it, that's why.
Okay.
I still make a motion.
Randy, you got something?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I need to...
Keep trying, keep trying.
Add the jamming questions on my report. Well, the second canine unit kind of freaked me out.
Why's that?
Cost.
Did you not read the report? It said donations were coming.
Well, yeah, but donations are good today, they, what about the... I mean, you know, this is serious, they consider cost.
I'm guessing we insure that, though.
I would say they're probably on the insurance.
I think that we...
Well, why don't we too?
Because we have two different shifts, and one's not on all the time.
What does the county have? They have two?
They have four.
Four? Holy cow, when did these canine units become...
What are you, a dog hater?
No, it's just, I think about, yeah, there's two. We don't, we don't live in, we live in rural America, for God's sakes, and just kind of...
But they're cheaper than having an extra officer as...
Okay, well, now there's an argument for.
They snout.
And they, they can find stuff that we can't.
Well, yeah, oh, their snouts are better.
Plus, I mean, you can get some funding through the government forum, too, on different trainings.
I think you have a grant for that.
Black Marfabye.
They get lots of grants.
The amount of road traffic that has been coming through the community has increased.
Yeah.
And it would, it would be extremely beneficial to all of them.
Documented.
Documented.
Well, I think, so, sorry, miss, keep giving another officer, that, that, that's...
It's like to have an impartial officer, though you got bad animals in with you, and it's better than just being there by yourself.
And you got one, yeah, one officer and one dog, people tend to pay attention.
They only part of that dog.
Yeah, even if it's a dog that just sniffs drugs and's not a biter, they don't, they don't know.
Right.
So it does get people in attention.
Same handler. Do the same handler.
No, it'd be Chris Fisher, who was a handler before when he was here, and...
So he's already trained, he just has to have him with the dog.
What are we gonna do with the other dog?
Dog, we, we are still planning on hopefully having it.
We'll go ahead, you want two units as well, yeah.
Yeah, okay, sorry. But anyway, we can come to it when we get...
Because they're trained to work, I mean, can they work with other handlers if they're better with one? Like, yeah, they train with a certain handler.
I guess my question is, if we lose this other officer...
What do we do?
Then we've got two dogs, one handler.
It's hard to retrain them with another handler, from what I've been told, that you can try.
They usually are, they're giving that dog, and they'll have to retire it.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's just basically...
The invoice, radios.
We got it, we got the invoice, and I sent it to you the other day to get it in the email.
I don't have the invoice for it.
I emailed it to you.
Maybe it doesn't look like an invoice.
I do, everybody, every day.
It is, I emailed it last week.
Who's I?
Oh, why do you not be...
The county has more reviews, I'm just, wow.
Yeah, I suppose you went to calls, I was listening to some of your comments there. That doesn't make sense.
Did, also, were you aware that starting May 6th, contractors for N-Dog's gonna be repaving 36 from, yep, from, well, probably doing one and then the other.
Well, hope it's not chip seal, for Pete's sake, maybe you got the 36 last...
I would doubt it, I would doubt they do that in a town, but...
Well, what are they, what are they...
Probably repaving, and they'll be starting, I believe, at, on 36, and then moving to 41, and it goes from the sale barn to CVS, and then Sassafras to all the federal ramps.
What are they doing to ramps? I thought the ramps were supposed to be started.
They're gonna be doing that, too. I mean, with, let's cross the lead from Milestone on Thursday for a pre-construction meeting.
Okay. They're putting signs up the scene.
Yeah, so that'll give us a, a pretty good timeline.
You find any invoice for anything?
Not yet. You ever search through emails?
Oh, I don't like it.
Well, I know it, it's not on here, because I went through the town's email, and I can't get it to work on my phone.
Yeah, I didn't get it online.
Anything else?
And I just forwarded it from them, but that's gonna be down to one lane, and that'll be starting May 6th and goes through August.
Oh, boy.
What, what?
Repaving.
They'll take that one, the pay.
Well, see, how many rooms you pay?
Well, we have to have five of them stand there, one of them.
You'll have to explain that to the company that does it.
They'll be in the out of here all week. It'll be the N-Dog ramps, it'll be the ADA ramps.
And plus, the, the buckling of the pavement by the cemetery and stuff, they've got to repair those things too.
They'll just cut that out, report, I'm sure.
Ask them if they fix the drainage issues off of 41 while they're at it.
That'd be nice.
No, they'll be creating more, probably.
Right, yeah.
And if, if you have, if you're on Facebook, I had a little disagreement with people on Park County chat the other day about a dog situation, and that the dog was not being illegally taken care of, and, and...
Is that the, uh, Walton Street?
Yes, and that the dog was out there temporarily for people to see the dog and try to get somebody to adopt it, and they did it the right way. In fact, one of our officers has even adopted one of the dogs from that place, so that dog was taken care of.
That's a very good guy.
Oh, no, but it just...
Well, it was in a crate one.
Yes, but that crate was so small, and that dog was so big.
It was inhumane, and one person even told me that they could see the fear in the dog's eyes because the dog felt like it was being discarded like a piece of...
Did that person tell you the dog told him that?
Yeah, I told him to quit making judgments based on one photograph, and if they want to do something to correct this, then go adopt the dog, and then they can raise it the way everybody on Facebook tells them to.
Should have deferred all questions to AJ Gordon, I thought he helped handle that very well.
Oh, dear.
Yes.
Holy man.
No, it, it was...
Pretty slut on, yeah.
Yeah, so if you get any complaints, that's what it was, but I was very nice to him, I just told him.
I like Park County chat.
It's just, social media's not good. After about a minute, I go like this news.
And you sit there with popcorn.
Well, I think we should go away with the corn, just indicating everything.
Well, yeah, everybody's got it, so, totally, so...
Okay, anything up?
That's it.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll say that.
All papers.
Ah, yeah.